Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:00 PM, and we're going to call this Urbana City Council Committee the whole meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Emmens.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Dickerson. Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, have staff report and a presentation by the sanitary district. Oh, Bill has some...I'm sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
What I want to do is introduce our guest speaker tonight, Rick Manor, who's the executive director of the Urbana and Champaign sanitary district, is going to provide us an update on some topics and, of course, here to answer any other questions you might have. He was here probably about two years ago and gave us an update, and there's a lot that's transpired since then, so I'd like to turn it over to Rick, and he has a slide presentation for us.
Yes, thanks, Bill. Also, as a point of information, we've declared this a public meeting of our board of trustees as well, and so we do have a majority of a quorum present on our end, but because we've declared it a special meeting, you guys can actually talk substantively between each other if you want to direct things past me to the board. So we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act in that way. But again, thanks for inviting me. It's nice to give you all an update as to what the sanitary district's been doing in the last couple of years. I have the fun job of bragging about the hard work of 50 other people that take care of the sewage running through the communities, and it's always a pleasure to be talking about Last update, as Bill said, was about a year and a half ago. Today, I'm going to be talking to you about our Second Street Pump Station project that has been underway for some time. In addition to that, we'll be talking about service areas for the sanitary district, and then Bill asked for an update in regards to some Cronus issues, and then also I wanted to talk to you about our rate evaluation that we've been doing. You'll find that I reuse slides, and so this is an example of that, that when I talked to you a year and a half ago, we were talking about a proposed pump station at Second Street. Now, I fully expect it to be a real pump station at Second Street, that we have constructed about two miles of force main associated with this project already, and we just took bids in regards to the station itself and finishing off the rest of the project this last month. In summary, what we're...the challenge we are facing is presented nicely in regards to this slide. This is actually the color drawing that is the sewer planning map for the sanitary district from the 1920s. So back in 1923, they were doing on colored paper and dividing up the two towns and the various drainage districts...drainage areas for the sewers were represented in here, and the problem that we were faced, that we have been facing in the last couple of years, is the intensity of the growth there in the center area, which is essentially the north end of campus, downtown Champaign, and downtown Urbana. That through that area, we have four interceptor sewers that were built in 1898, 1923, 1946, and 1956. So basically, our youngest sewer in that area is about ready to get social security, and our oldest one predates the sanitary district by 22 years as well. So it's well over 100 years old and still doing quite well, but recognize that when these sewers were planned and constructed, there was not the intensity of development that is in that area today. And in particular, in the last five years, we've seen an awful lot of densification of development, all concentrating essentially on, you know, a square half-mile area there between Springfield and University, et cetera. And so all of that flow is going into sewers that were designed, built, and constructed 60-some years ago plus. And so we're relying on some very old workers that need to keep on going for the next 50 years. And the biggest challenge we were facing with was if we need to expand flow through that area, do we really have a route for snaking a fifth sanitary sewer of some significance through the campus town area, through downtown Urbana, and getting it over to our northeast treatment plant? And that was going to be a very challenging, very expensive route to build along, and so we came up with a solution that we think is pretty neat and one that I'm quite proud of, that...and that is that we're taking the flow from the existing four interceptors on the west end of campus, right around Scott Park at about Second Street and Springfield, and we're going to drain all the flow from the interceptors in that area, giving that a new route for that flow that's from the west of there to take that south and then over to our west...southwest plant, and thereby providing new space in those existing sewers. So the work that they used to be doing west of Scott Park, they will be drained again and emptied, and thereby indirectly get a fifth sewer's worth of capacity out of that area. So we like that solution quite a bit. It addresses growth in the downtown areas of all three towns that, if you count campus town as its own town area. It makes new room in existing pipes. Most critically, it avoids constructing through the densest part of town, that running a sewer down Springfield...sanitary sewers are typically...start off at about eight feet deep, go down to 20 feet deep. You can imagine trying to construct through that area and snaking through all the utilities in that area would have been quite a nightmare. And amazingly enough, it's only an $8 million project, but most critically here, this is...my board directed me that we should increase interceptor cost recovery fees, which is a developer fee, not the user charge. So current residents are not paying for this construction project. That was a question in the News Gazette a few months back, who's paying for this? And the...we're taking a revolving loan fund loan on it, but that those loan...the income to pay that loan will be via developer fees, what we call our interceptor cost recovery Some side benefits of this project are, as I said earlier, it reduces some of the overloading of some existing sewers, and some of those sewers were quite heavily loaded. It allows growth from, obviously, from the existing areas in that area, Craft and Marketplace all drained through this...through this area. But most importantly, and the reason I'm talking to you guys about this, is this also helps out Urbana, that by providing the...the new capacity in these same sewers, those sewers are then able to handle new growth within Urbana. So although the construction is over in Champaign, the benefits are felt here in Urbana. So for example, your campus circle project and other such things would have been impacted badly if our sewers became overloaded too much, that we would have difficulties handling new growth in Urbana, and this way we can handle that very effectively. In addition to that, some side benefits that we anticipate the university perhaps being able to eliminate their Orchard Towns pump station. Pump stations are a maintenance issue that the university would be liking to get rid of. In addition, initially, there were some talks about how this might benefit Cronus in regards to getting more flow over at our southwest plant, which is the flow that we would be selling flow to Cronus from. However, since Cronus has not formally begun construction yet, that's not really an issue. The reason we began construction of this project in 2014 was because of the intense growth of development in the campus town area. So although back in 2013, when this was first being talked about, there was some discussions about Cronus, that is not really an issue today, or that is not actually the driver for this construction project. It would still be an issue. At one point, there was talking about putting a trail through Washington Park, the Champaign Park District said they didn't want it, so although our sewer...our force main goes underneath Washington Park, sometimes called Fraternity Park over between Third and Fourth Street, we're not going to do a trail through there. So this is the route. The part in yellow is already under...is already constructed, so the toughest part, the part through campus area on Second, Third, and Fourth Street and Armory, has already been constructed all the way down to Kirby. With luck, you didn't hear terribly much about that construction project. We like doing construction projects that people don't notice so much, and so we tried to blend into the resurfacing work that was already being done on Fourth Street and working in and around that project, and we didn't have too many big upsets or anything like that, so I think that construction that's been done has been done quite well. And again, we just took bids in regards to the part that's in red, putting in the actual pump station and finishing off the force main and gravity sewer. I've been mentioning the pump station site. We're talking about building on the west side of Scott Park, just outside of the park, so it's technically on City of Champaign property, and the parking spots over there on the west side. And in particular, we're going to try and be sensitive to the very fine architecture that was done in the...in the rehabbing of Scott Park a few years ago. We're going to use stone facade on the building that will be very similar to the entrance kiosks that are at the park and how sandstone, et cetera, has been the primary theme of those things. We're hoping to build something that looks like an oversized shed that is next to the park, but isn't something that anybody notices as a wastewater or sewage utility building at all. And in fact, here's the...through the magic of Google Earth and CAD and such, we've actually plopped it right into a picture of what it would look like, except that we would be looking more at a tan facade on it as well, and we've done a few other things to make it look a little bit better. The gray thing on top is gone, and so again, it's a...it's an oversized shed, and we hope that people wonder what the heck it is, because we want it to be quiet and unassuming and not very obvious. And the goal is to be operational in 2017, and part of the reason I'm quite proud of this is that we undertook a pretty substantial construction project, and this is the first time that we've been doing it much with the interceptor sewers through this campus area in the last 60 years. And so I think it's going quite well, and I've been very pleased with the cooperation we've had from the City of Champaign, Champaign Park District, and our design consultant, Farah Graham, has done an awesome job in regards to this project as well. We've had good contractors working on it, too, and so I think it's something for the sanitary district to be quite proud of, and so I'm bragging about it regularly. In regards to our future service area, this is from your comprehensive plan maps, and this is looking at the High Cross Road corridor. And as you are probably quite familiar with, there was talk about on the High Cross Road corridor of an East Urbana pump station, somewhere either along High Cross or perhaps further east, that would eventually be cornerstone of development over there on the far east end of Urbana. That project was on the books and pretty well planned and designed, and then when development came to a screeching halt, the plans for that construction project came to a screeching halt. Basically, there was plans for the cost to be shared between Urbana and the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district and the primary developer over there, Menards, and when Menards fell through, it stopped. The reason I'm bringing that up is to comment that when development comes back to the east side, we will have that third pot of money to perhaps look at restarting this project. Right now, we do have a pump station over there on High Cross. However, it is limited in its capacity to deal with much more growth than what's out there, so before there is large growth out there, we will have to look at teaming up to do a large...large construction project similar on scale to what is the Second Street Pump Station project, and it's again going to be in the $8 to $10 million range because of how big and deep that work would be. In addition to development along High Cross, there is another potential source for some of those funds as well in terms of bringing in that third pot of money, so that it's not just all Urbana and Urbana-Champaign sanitary district money. And that would be if development started to really catch fire south of Windsor, and that that would actually keep...provide that third section of money, that if there was growth projects down there of a couple hundred acres, that things in that area could also be potential development options. Here, I've got things coming right south of Windsor, near Windsor and High Cross, but in addition to that, perhaps south of Pomology, south of Yankee Ridge are all possibilities. As you go further away, there's more infrastructure that needs to be built, it's more expensive, so I'm not necessarily expecting any of these to come through in the imminent future, but eventually, they will be necessary because we need to build that to get the next layer of sewers going to our treatment plant. And then that blue one that's slightly faded is the...is the main reason I'm bringing up this slide is you probably have heard there was...has been some discussion about perhaps Philo or Philo and Sidney or tying onto the UCSD sewer system, and that would be interesting and useful in that that could easily be the third pot of money, being money from them, from those communities, or perhaps the state of Illinois. That the state has a fund for providing sewers to unsewered small communities. They are focusing on small communities and trying to benefit them because it's difficult to resolve their sewer issues without some state assistance, and so one of the things that they could look at doing is help provide that sewer system, that connection up to here. We would look at teaming up with them, and again, their money would be the add-on that could perhaps get the East Urbana pump station built sooner, which would be the reason why we, as in the sanitary district, would be interested. The benefit to the ratepayers would be getting that infrastructure going. A similar thing occurred over in Bonville area, where Bonville was needing sanitary sewer system installed, and they are now tied onto our sewer system. It took many years of effort, but eventually, that got done as well. So that would be the model for what we'd be looking at doing. Bill asked for a quick update on Cronus, and again, Cronus is the potential sale of our effluent from our southwest plant to the fertilizer plant that they would like to build down in Tuscola. If it occurs, it will be of significant benefit to the area in terms of economic growth. That to give you an idea of scale, their project is about a billion, a billion and a half dollars. That's the level of private investment that is comparable to the Mitsubishi plant in terms of it's as big as that. For those people who aren't old enough to remember that, the youngsters around, Mall of America was built for a billion dollars, and it made national news, and people know about that. And so we're talking about something that's significant, that if it goes, would be substantial investment in the area, and the impact on us is we would be looking at selling our effluent to their fertilizer plant. Unfortunately, projects this big are really slow-moving, and so they still have not gotten to get going on construction. That being said, they're still working diligently to do the project, and my expectation is the project is still going to happen. The construction schedule has always been a sliding schedule, that it's 36 months from when they get going is when they expect to be started, and so that's been moving back as the start date has continued...continued to move back. The first effluent sales would be a little bit before the startup of the plant, because they need water down there to test their equipment, and so we'd be actually trying to get done in about two years, two years and a few months, so that they could use the water within their construction project. But again, so far, that has not happened yet, and so really, what has been happening at the sanitary district is a lot of non-Cronus decisions. For example, as I mentioned, Second Street Pump Station at first was somewhat linked to Cronus. We've had to since decouple it entirely, and we have funding for it, and we started the construction entirely because of the development pressures. Similarly, the next topic I'm going to be talking about, our rate evaluation, looks at our rates over the next five years, and since Cronus would not be selling...or would not be purchasing any effluent for the majority of that time already guaranteed, if they announced tomorrow, they wouldn't be doing significant sales for a while. Our rate evaluation is one where the board's decision was, let's eliminate discussion about Cronus, because it's not going to be a factor for the front end of this no matter what. So, on to the rate study. An important point about the sanitary district is our finances are actually quite simple. We have three primary sources of income. Our user charge, which is the bill that you and other ratepayers see on a monthly basis, on a per-gallon charge. You use gallons, we bill you for the gallons, because we have to treat those gallons. So that one's pretty straightforward. An important part of our bill is that we do not fund capital projects out of that fund. Our capital projects come from connection permit fees if they are within the plant and interceptor cost recovery fees when they are large interceptors. The interceptor cost recovery fee, I was just talking about how it's applied to the Second Street Pump Station. The connection permit fee is for construction at the plant in terms of building new capacity at the treatment plant, in terms of allowing new homes and new businesses to tie on. Those new homes and new businesses pay for that construction and that connection permit via the connection permit fee. And also, an important factor on this is our connection permit fees is also to somewhat use to get us up to date. That, for example, when your house was built, if your house was built in the 1920s, the type of treatment that was installed back then is quite primitive relative to today. And so the new construction fees come in to update the fact that the plant has needed to become much more complex today versus the 1920s, and so that technology and that modernization and new regulation is part of what the connection fees is also spent upon. Very important point for us is that we've been off the property tax roll since late 1980s. There was some direction of an edict from the U.S. EPA that sanitary districts should be mostly charging on a per-gallon basis, that there should be an encouragement for conservation, was the general theme, and the Sanit...UCSD took that to heart, and we went 100% off of property taxes towards user charges and these impact fees. And so that's actually kept our finances quite simple. So when we're looking at our rates, the last time we seriously looked at rate study was in 2007, and that was because we were undertaking a lot of construction at that time. We had just finished construction at the southwest plant. We are under design for the northeast plant, and so we had to pay for that, and so we set up a series of nine 3% rate increases, starting in 2008, going through 2016, May of 2016. So we've been on that schedule since then. My predecessor, Mike Little, did a very nice conservative design based on the economics in 2007. Unfortunately, right after that, everything fell apart in terms of the economy. In particular, interest rates took a deep dive, and we had a decent amount invested in interest, and our income is a third of what it was anticipated. AC Humco closed down. That was $400,000 a year that the sanitary district is no longer seeing. Development income disappeared for a solid four years. Entertainingly enough, because the water rates are higher, people are conserving more, and so we're actually seeing lower per household flows from a number of neighborhoods. And so the fact that so many of our costs are fixed in terms of loans and such that are 20-year loans, it is a little bit of a burden that people are conserving, but it's something that we need to adjust and look at our rates for. So actually, if you slip to the bottom of this, the basic theme of us doing our rate study is no surprises, that my board was very explicit that, you know, we should work to not surprise anybody in regards to what we're doing, and that's partly why I'm talking to you about our rates, is it's very useful for us to be here and be predictive or predictable in terms of our rates. So we're looking at what rates we would need to do over the next five years. We're looking at single-digit rate increases, you know, and we're not trying to shock the world in regards to anything, but we do have some need to catch up in regards to our depleted reserves, that in 2011, when I first arrived at this job, I was talking to our board about, you know, can we look at perhaps raising fees a little bit more, and I was told, no, we've got this 3% a year plan, we're not deviating from it, and so we're now coming to the end of it, and so that's where we're looking at our rates. Again, Cronus income is not considered in this rate evaluation, because the earliest that we'll see any income would be 2019. So with that, set for questions. And again, if you want to direct any to the board, you can.
Bill?
Sure.
Thanks. I like your income structure and how you allocate your fees. I don't think that's the way the water company does it, because it seems like every time they need to increase capacity, our rates go up, whether we need to increase capacity or not. I did have a couple of questions about the Second Street Pump Station. You said that that would be paid for by the increased developers' fee and the cost share or cost recovery fee. I don't think you mentioned Champaign's share. Did they...do they also have a cost share in that?
No, that we ended up starting that project in regards to getting the...the income is from the developer fees.
So were the developer fees raised early enough so that you could capture some of the new development there?
Yes, that we...in that the rate of development is greater on the Champaign side of things, there's more Champaign income, if you will, coming for that, that the growth that is happening over there is helping to pay for that, that the first step in the rate increase occurred last May, next two steps are coming, but in addition to that, the original baseline amount of the interceptor cost recovery fee has always been there since 2002, I believe, is when the interceptor cost recovery fee was started.
So about what percentage rate increase, say, for a developer that developed two years ago versus two years from now, over the four-year period, about, is it like double or 20%?
It is 40% more.
Okay. Okay, I think that answers my question.
And just as a point of reference, while that's a large percentage we're talking about, I believe it was $100, $200 per residential dorm room type thing when you're talking about those 20-story buildings and such, that it was, I believe, I think it was $100 or $200 per unit type of charge.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Eric?
Will the needs of Cronus be completely satisfied by effluent, or will they need to augment that with...with pure water?
The intent of the sale was that our flow was going to be the main flow by far. There is an option that if there isn't enough, they could use some other sources, and that could be a variety of options, but the contract was written with the entire intent of UCSD providing 100% of the flow of their processed water. Obviously, drinking water and sanitation within the facility, they already...they do have a drinking water supply in addition to ours, but of the processed water, the intent is UCSD provides it all, and we are going to some expense to take care of that, in particular in drought years, that we are looking at installing a lagoon on our end, and they're going to have a lagoon on their end to help deal with some of the drought conditions. And so, yeah, that's...that's the...the general theme is we wanted to not impact the aquifer was, I think I can say quite safely, the strong motivation behind the board's approval of it was to protect the aquifer so that it can be used for good drinking water purposes as opposed to an industrial purpose.
Well, just a secondary point, though, because the ultimately, the effluent...the effluent would ultimately, after a long period of time, recharge the aquifer.
If technically, there's not really much of a recharge before it leaves the aquifer, that if you look where our southwest plant is, it's a very short distance before it's gone off of the aquifer, and so the opportunity of flow from our southwest plant to recharge in is quite limited.
Oh, okay, so maybe I guess I may not understand our local water cycle. So the...so our effluent goes somewhere else.
Generally, leaves the district, it leaves the county, right.
It leaves the district, it leaves, okay.
Yes, that you really can only flow into an aquifer from relatively short distance over it.
Yeah.
And we are so close to the edge, the periphery of the Mohammed Aquifer to begin with, that there's very little opportunity for that flow, in particular on the southeast side, the southwest side, to do recharge. Flow from the northeast plant has some better chance as well, but...but at the same time also, that is a really limited area, that the primary mode of recharge is through rain over the many acres.
Right.
That the flow in the river, unless it happens to hit a relatively good sandy recharge zone, and they're plotting a lot of that out, and so there's some possibility that there are some spots where it really drains well, but a large part of the drainage, I...my understanding of groundwater, and it's only one class that I've taken in a bit of reading, so I could be wrong, is that it's mostly over the many acres as opposed to that. And I know for, in particular, that the southwest plant, it definitely is leaving the aquifer very quickly.
So just not to belabor the point, but I just want to make sure that I understand this. So the water that we take from the aquifer and that goes out to the sanitary district actually totally leaves the aquifer area?
I would say a large percentage of it absolutely does.
A large percentage of it does, okay.
And actually, if, so long as we're going backwards, a real quick point to Representative Brown, the rates that Illinois American charge are structured by the Illinois Commerce Commission, and so they're stuck with that, that my partners on the drinking water side have a much more difficult time in terms of setting up a rate structure that has as much logic as ours does, because they are bound by Illinois Commerce Commission rules. So they're stuck with that aspect.
Diane?
So if the pump station, the High Cross Road pump station is near capacity and our enterprise zone stimulates... our enterprise zone stimulates a lot of residential construction in South Urbana or East Urbana, what, what's the scenario, though? Number one, do those developers of those homes pay the cost recovery fee? So every new house built has a cost recovery fee attached to it?
Correct.
And then, so how will you handle the new construction out there?
Very similar to what we just undertook, is that the interceptor cost recovery fee and connection fees are going into a general pot that the district maintains. And with that, we undertake construction projects on an as-needed basis. And so if there is a growth spurt over there, we would be moving with some degree of speed, similar to what we did with regards to the Second Street pump station, in response to development. Because although development happens fast, it still is over a year's cycle. And we know what our flows are today and we anticipate and do a good job of planning so that we should not impede development, even when it comes as fast as it has on campus, for example. And so we would work quickly with you in regards to setting up that construction project. And again, that's why it is already designed, is because of the rate of development in the 2000s. So we would be able to open up that set of plans, say, let's get to work on building this and get it done in a couple of years. And so if we do our jobs well, and we usually do, you should not see any impact that developers would be seeing construction going on, but should not be told, hey, you can't build because we're not there yet. My job is to make sure that we are there before the development reaches that point.
And just so I understand, a pump station basically pumps, boosts the sewage back toward your plant for treatment?
Right. In general, sewers flow by gravity going downhill at, when we need to either go uphill or when the sewers have gotten so deep that it's expensive to build down 25 feet into the ground, we lift it back up to get it at a more reasonable constructable elevation in the 5 to 15 feet deep range. And again, also to go uphill because, for example, Southeast Urbana is lower elevation-wise than Northeast Urbana is. And so to get it up to the Northeast plant, we're pumping it uphill.
Okay, thanks.
Bill?
One comment, since we're talking about interceptor cost recovery fees. A few years ago, staff had been talking about taking that topic up before council, or at least the council back then. We haven't seen a lot of that growth yet since the '07-'08 recession area period in the High Cross Road area. But to be poised and ready for that, this is a topic that staff will probably be bringing to your attention. Savoy has an interceptor cost recovery fee, Champaign has an interceptor cost recovery fee. They have projects that certainly warrant it. And we, with this large pump station that Rick has talked about, would warrant it too. So stay tuned. It's not tonight's discussion, but I think in the weeks and months ahead, it's something we need to consider so that we can have that pot of money to pay our share of that $8 million or $10 million project, too. Because I don't think we want, and again, it's for discussion, but I don't think we want all the ratepayers in the city to pay for it versus who it's really benefiting. And that is for future development sites. So anyway, the discussion's for another time, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that that's, that probably will be coming.
You want to, Bill?
Okay, so just for clarification, I think maybe I misunderstood. The interceptor cost recovery fee, is that something the cities impose on the developers or is that something the sanitary district imposes?
Well, there's two of them, technically. The sanitary district has this fee for the entire area they serve. Okay, so that's everyone, okay? What we're talking, in addition to that, the city would have costs for interceptors, extensions, and hopefully it would be recovered by developers and development, per se. So that would be all part of the, you know, if our, if the sanitary district's share is, say, four or so million and our share is four or so million, where does our $4 million come from, so to speak? And we'd like a lot of that to come from future developments, hence the interceptor cost recovery fee.
Okay. And we, and we were just told that the Champaign didn't have to pay any for their Second Street pump station. I'm having a hard time figuring out what the difference is between our Southeast Urbana potential station, if there's development there, why we would have to pay half and Champaign doesn't have to pay half for theirs, because the development already occurred?
A couple of things, yes. The sanitary district fees are, in regards to existing development, are ones that we take on. And so the cost share that was set up for the East Urbana pump station, to the extent that there was existing flow, is where UCSD was paying our share of that pump station. And so that's, that's how that project was funded and estimated at that time. The Second Street pump station involves redirecting a large amount of existing flow. And so it is, it is used, that the flow that will be redirected is parts that are already coming to the Northeast plant that will be going over to the Southwest plant. And so there again, the flow is primarily in regards to existing flows that are being rerouted. Also, again, recognize that the rerouting, again, benefits both communities because we are making capacity for Urbana projects as well. So while the construction is in Champaign, it, I wouldn't call it a Champaign-exclusive project in terms of who's benefited from it. And so that's, that's another aspect of that one in the financing of that. But this is something that we will be looking at closely in regards to if and when we get going on the East Urbana pump station, we'll be looking at the, the structure and the cost sharing and something that Bill and I will be talking about extensively and we'll be presenting to you guys at that time.
Okay, thanks. That helps a lot, I think. And just to repeat the plug that I think Aaron or maybe it's Carol put in last time, I think if people get a chance to tour the facility, it's really interesting.
Thank you.
And really impressive how clean the water comes out.
And actually, we've done the previous three tours over on the Northeast plant. May 21, we will be over at our Southwest facility this year.
Further questions from the council? I knew you had one. Go ahead, Mike.
There you go.
So you say that you are assuming no revenue from Cronus. You're assuming Cronus is not constructed in your planning for rate increases?
Correct. But to be clear, I do still expect Cronus to build, but our rate valuation did not include that because of how late it would be in the structure.
So if Cronus is built and you expect it to be built, how will that impact your rate structure? Will you ratchet back your rate increases?
From the beginning, I've been talking about how it would be a benefit to the current ratepayers to see this income, that the net financial income for ourselves would be in the range of about $1 million a year. That would be income that we would be getting out of Cronus, net income, that we would not have to be taking out of the current ratepayers. However, I have never been quoted as saying it eliminates all rate increases, it replaces rate increases. And so that would be $1 million of rate increase that we would be getting from Cronus instead of the current ratepayers. And so we would see that benefit. We'd be evaluating where we're at. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we generally are pretty slow-moving in terms of adjusting things. When the crash hit, we didn't change rates. We absorbed that loss for a little bit. We would probably look at seeing where things are. And again, when, if Cronus gets started in 2019, 2020-ish, that would be right about when we're planning the next five-year rate study. And so it would actually be pretty timely that we'd see what volume they're actually going to purchase at. We have a minimum amount of income that we will get from them, but we don't know for sure what flow rate they will be at. And so that first year would be useful in terms of evaluating what sort of flows we're going to see, what sort of sales we're going to see, so that we can do the planning for the next part. So that income would be an input. The ratepayers would see a benefit from it, but I don't know exactly whether it would mean that we see no rate increase or what exactly at this time.
Okay, so the past plan was 3% per year?
Right.
And has that actually come to fruition? Is that just been an automatic 3%? Or have you evaluated every year based on expenses?
I have been reporting to our board every year where we're at, but we passed an ordinance that established the 3% increases back in 2007. And so we just followed through on that ordinance and we haven't adjusted off of that. And that's my anticipation, is that once we put it in, that we really want to honor that as best we can. And realistically, our finances are not so radical. While people might change their water usage a little bit, we're not like California where you might see a 20% reduction or anything like that. I can't imagine even local ratepayers responding to that level. So we don't see that radical of a shift and we can usually withstand, any five-year plan should be able to follow through. And that would be my intent, would be follow through whatever we plan for the full five years.
Okay, so you also mentioned, in this next five-year plan, I think the phrase you used was single-digit increases, but that you had urged the board to revisit the 3%. So I'm inferring from that that you are recommending north of 3% in this next five-year plan?
We'll see that. On the user charge, I think we can probably keep it right about 3. That's not a promise yet, but in looking at things, we're looking right in that range on the user charge end of things. The developer fees are potentially more 5, 6-ish. And that's because frankly, cost of technology is expensive and rehab of equipment is expensive, that our treatment plants are worth $150 million. And so if you give it a 50-year lifespan, that means $3 million of equipment is falling apart every year. And so, and the sewers are of similar value and so they need that similar tender-loving care of millions of dollars of upkeep. And so that's the difficulty there. But we're, we're still trying to keep it as low as we can in the low percentages range. And if you want to tune into our board meeting next week, we're going to be talking about this more.
Okay. And my final question is, so what, what impact will a 300,000-square-foot new office facility off of Curtis Road, $75 million project that's locating in Champaign and not Urbana, what kind of impact will that have on the system and what kind of fees will they pay?
Our rates, our connection permits, 355 per population equivalent, so for the equivalent of a single household, is in the range of $1,300 right now on connection permit. The interceptor cost recovery fee is another $700, $800. So a typical household equivalent is in the low 2000s in terms of what it costs the sanitary district for that household equivalent. And office space area, a typical 100 square foot of office space is about 1/10 of a house is 200, so in the 200 to 200, 300. So that, trying to do the math in my head, and I'm unfortunately not able to do that much calculating. We will figure out the fee and use a calculator instead of trying to do it in my head. I'm guessing it's tens of thousands. We are not that big on, in development budgets. It is rare that a sanitary district charge is the biggest fee on anything. You know, we are a minor utility as far as the overall budget for most construction projects. It's necessary, but fortunately, we're on the low end of most people's radar screen that developers don't like seeing any increase in any of their fees. But what our fees are doesn't make or break.
No, of course. That's not what I was getting at at all. It was, I appreciate you indulging me there. It was more about raising the fact that Carl is relocating their 1,400 employees, many of which reside, or at least during the workday reside in Urbana.
Yes.
And spend money at restaurants in Urbana. Mine included. And they'll be vacating to 20 minutes away from their hospital. So I was just curious about, you know, what the impact would be on the sanitary districts. And I expect I'll be asking that question of a lot of folks a lot over the next few months. All right, thank you.
I understand, okay.
Okay, anybody else? No? Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda for us is approval of the minutes from the January 11, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Smythe, second by?
Second.
Eric Jacobson. That was moved by Mr. Smythe and second by Eric Jacobson. All in favor? Oh, Bill?
Sorry, I do have one correction. At the end, it said there being no further business. Chair Bill Brown declared the meeting adjourned and I wasn't chair. It was still Eric, so. Just, the person that adjourned the meeting was the same one that started the meeting.
And actually, there's a, there's a missing D in, under 2A in the first sentence. Sophie Pham acknowledged her work in completion of the financial report.
So Madam Clerk, did you get those corrections? Thank you very much. Any other questions, concerns about the minutes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Public input. I have a card from Bishop King and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They do not wish to address the committee, but ask that they're, know that they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis sewer problem. You guys should see, should not let him leave. No, I'm just kidding. All right. And we also have Susan Frobis.
Frobis.
Frobis, who would like to address the committee before the agenda items. So Susan, if you would like to come up, please do.
Good evening. My name is Susan Frobis and I would like to address the council regarding the impact of the no smoking policy on the University of Illinois campus on the neighboring homeowners in Urbana. I'm the homeowner at 809 West Delaware, which is the corner of Lincoln and Delaware, directly across from College Court, which is the area where Lincoln Avenue or Florida Avenue Residence Halls and Pennsylvania Avenue Residence Halls are, more commonly known as FAR and PAR. Starting with the fall term back in August, I noticed cigarette smells in my home on nice days when I had my windows open. And we are a family of non-smokers. I noticed some students or dorm employees standing on my front lawns smoking. Now, I shut the windows and I went outside and I nicely asked if they could move from my front lawn. And I was told that this was public property and that they can smoke here if they wish because they can no longer smoke on the university campus across the street. They left shortly, but they left their cigarette butts and drink containers behind. Some smokers have been more considerate than that first encounter and some not. But the bottom line is, there's a daily flow of people standing and smoking, with most leaving trash behind. Some walk up and down the block smoking and the multitude of cigarette butts collecting in the lawns is, is just pretty awful. As a non-smoker, at first blush, I thought the non-smoking policy on campus was a great thing. But the impact it has on the surrounding homes is not good and impacts the quality of life. Can the city please help me be able to enjoy fresh air in my own home and in the spring, the right to enjoy gardening in my yard without being subjected to a much more intense secondhand smoke and trash? When confronted with a problem, I try to seek possible solutions. I find it very ironic that I'm now in a position of advocating for smokers' rights. So here's my suggestion. There is a lot of green space on the east side of Lincoln Avenue alongside FAR and PAR. Perhaps the university can build a few gazebo's or smoker shelters, you know, designated smoking areas, convenient to the dorms and away from my home. This may be a helpful suggestion for other areas around campus as well. And to the possible university administrator that might stand firm on the no smoking on campus policy, I would then suggest deed these small portions of land back to the cities of Urbana and Champaign and your campus ban is intact. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Questions, counsel? Charlie?
Yeah, well, Susan has been asking what can be done to help her. And I know Jim took a look at what we have on the books. And I think the only thing we can do is try to help Susan talk to the university. So I think that's, that's the next step. And hopefully, they'll catch wind of this conversation and, and there'll be some way we can begin a dialogue because, and you know, for one thing, somebody needs to go and pick up all the cigarette butts that are, that are littering the neighborhood. And no one should have to pick up trash after the neighborhood and no one should have to pick up trash after people walking up and down the blocks like that as well. So, we need to come up with some kind of solution.
I have a few, I didn't bring them tonight, but I have a few photographs of, you know, groups standing there and the trash left behind. Like I said, it's, you know, appreciate the idea of a smoke-free area, but then when it impacts the neighbors alongside that smoke-free area to have even more smoke than normal, you know, I'm hoping there's a solution that can be found.
Bill and Eric?
Do you know if it's mostly employees from one of the residence halls there or?
It's a combination because you can kind of tell sometimes some of them are younger and, you know, various times a day and, you know, I've even noticed kind of an area where some of the employees who, you can tell are much older, kind of sneak smokes in a certain area, but I won't divulge that publicly so they can stay away from my house. No, and stay there. No, but I think that, you know, there has to be a compromise rather than a total ban because it's hurting other people who are, they're hurting the people they're trying to protect, which are the non-smokers. And also, I think that, you know, I kind of feel sorry for these kids. I see them late at night crossing the street in the rain, in the snow, you know, and to have to cross Lincoln and I, I just think that there's got to be a better solution, a compromise that upholds no smoking around the dorms and the classrooms, but gives an area that if you are a smoker, you can walk around it, cross the street, walk away from it, but please help them, you know, stay out of like my front yard.
Eric?
I guess this question is for legal. Do we have, I'm sure we have a littering ordinance. Does the littering ordinance include cigarette butts?
I'd have to look at the littering ordinance. I don't know whether it includes, I don't think we specify the type of litter in littering ordinance. So theoretically, but cigarette butts would be included. Clearly, you have the right to move them off your property if they are on your property. They don't have the right to enter your property and if one way of protecting it is to post small no trespassing signs, then that can be enforced legally.
Well, that looks lovely along Lincoln Avenue. Welcome to Urbana. My children pay Carl's taxes and, and no, stay off my property. Now, I, I think, you know, I don't know if you also realize, but the Statue of Liberty's in my front yard is kind of a little bit of a local landmark. People come at graduation time and take pictures there. We kind of joke around and call it alma mater east. No trespassing signs to me. I kind of actually enjoy seeing people enjoy that aspect of my landscape and I, I would find it difficult, you know, to have no trespassing signs.
Have you spoken with, I think its title is Vice Chancellor Michael DiLorenzo?
I wasn't sure who to speak with.
I, I, that's pretty much going to the top.
Okay.
So, you might want to check with him.
Michael DiLorenzo, okay.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate you sharing that with us and I'm sure Charlie will take care of it.
Thanks, thanks for listening.
We've got your back, Charlie. Yeah, oh, you're going to help me build some gazebos on university property?
Okay, so if there's no other public input, we're going to move into, we have resolution number 2016-01-004R, a resolution approving a local agency agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Lincoln Avenue Construction from Olympia Drive to Saline Court, section number 11-00334-01-PV, Public Works.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize that the second page of the memo wasn't in your packet. I put a copy at each of your stations. It's at the top, it's titled Recommendation. So, it's the recommendation of the two resolutions on the agenda for number five and number six on the agenda. Okay, a couple of months ago, a similar IDOT agreement came to your attention that discussed the federal funding for right-of-way acquisition for North Lincoln Avenue. Again, this is the North Lincoln Avenue project. It's a one-mile stretch between Saline Court and the new Olympia Drive and tonight's discussion focuses on federal dollars to be used to help pay for the construction, some of the construction engineering and the utility relocation costs for this project. So, it's a fairly standard intergovernmental agreement with IDOT. It talks about the percentages of costs that will be federal costs, will be local costs. A reminder, all local costs are shared equally with Champaign County. That's been going on since several years ago when we started incurring engineering fees during the preliminary design and during the design phase of this project. So, there is two action items then in, for consideration. The first resolution would authorize the mayor to enter into this IDOT agreement for the expenditure of federal dollars, STU is Surface Transportation Urban Program monies is the funding source. Those dollars are flow through IDOT, through COATs, our Metropolitan Planning Organization, to the benefiting agencies, in this case, Champaign County and the city of Urbana. The second action item for consideration tonight then is our local share would be coming from, the funding source would be from state motor fuel tax money. So, in order to expand any state motor fuel tax money, we have a resolution in your packet for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. So, the anticipated dollar amount for that is $310,000, which would be the Urbana share. Be happy to answer any questions. We are actively in the right-of-way acquisition mode right now and again, we're hopeful that we could, we can construct or go out for bids later this spring.
Diane, and then Charlie?
I was just going to move resolution number 2016-01-004R to counsel with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
It's been moved to second, Diane Marlin moved it second by Bill Brown or was that Mike Madigan? Mike Madigan. Moved by Diane Marlin, second by Mike Madigan. Discussion, Charlie?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm very supportive of this project. I think this is the, the, the reason for having Olympia built to where it is, which is to, to provide for this light, new light industrial area north of town where we've seen, you know, substantial growth, slow and steady for the last 20 years. The one thing I note is in the third paragraph of the introduction, first sentence says two lanes with shoulder improvements. That was something I brought and asked for and so I assume this is the, we have good, we have good shoulders on either side. So, so this actually makes for a nice bicycling connection. Even those 45 miles an hour, it is a wide shoulder typically and lets you get out of town and take advantage of Olympia Drive as well, which has wide shoulders as well if you want to go westward. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Bill, how much does our motor fuel tax bring in each year?
$1 million. About $1 million. And in 1990, our state motor fuel tax brought in $1 million.
So, the?
1990, $1 million.
So, the $310,000, how much do we have left in that for the, so the fiscal year would be ending in?
Our fiscal year ends June 30th, but the money actually is budgeted in our budget currently, in this current fiscal year budget. But, in order for us to spend state motor fuel tax money, we, the city council that is, has to pass a resolution authorizing its expenditure and you can always use motor fuel tax money for certain expenditures. A road improvement is certainly one of those that you can spend, so.
I'm just trying to, I was just trying to get an idea of how much we have coming in. I thought it was like 1.3, but it's, it's?
No, it's, it's plus or minus, I think lately it's been a little under a million, but it's been real close to that. During the Illinois Jobs Now five-year capital program that has now ended, we got a little bump of 100 and some odd thousand dollars on top of that $1 million, but, but that has since stopped. We also are considered a growth community in the state of Illinois and I forget the criteria, if you grow so many percent every 10 years, you get a few more dollars and that's, I don't know.
$20,000 or?
Some modest, $20,000, which replaces a couple manholes or something, but that's what you get.
So, the motor fuel tax is what we use, all, all those funds are used for our road projects, right?
Yes. Yeah, I, I, in the budget, it, it kind of outlines what it's used for, but, but it is for, can be for resurfacing projects, it can be for reconstruction projects, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, everyone is a yes and a aye, okay. Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, so I'll move the companion resolution number 2016-15R, resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, North Lincoln Avenue improvements, construction engineering utilities to counsel with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Been moved by Charlie, second by Bill Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Ordinance number 2016-01-005, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual budget, marketing enterprise zone, workers' comp claim and miscellaneous items finance.
This is really just a, well, it's become about a monthly thing now that we have some cleanup items that we need to take care of. First is $14,000 for marketing this city's new enterprise zone. The mayor has recommended spending this money to promote the enterprise zone and get it off the ground in a big way. This will have ultimately a positive effect on the city's tax base and so that's definitely a good thing for us in the long term. We're also asking to amend the budget in the retained risk fund to provide an additional 155,000 to pay a relatively large workers' comp claim that was not provided for in the budget. The, at the Sister City Committee Meeting in January, the committee asked me to amend the budget to allow for expenditure of remaining funds that they have available to them. I know Dennis was sorry that he was unable to be here tonight, but he asked me to convey to you that he wholeheartedly recommends this change. And then, the final item is a very small recognition of a $350 donation for overtime in the fire department and then an offsetting expense related to that.
Question, Diane?
Just a few. For marketing, are we paying an outside firm to develop marketing materials or is this?
That's not the only item, but that is part of the plan, yes.
Okay. And is, can you say what the workers' comp payment is for or is that not allowed?
Closed session? Okay. Yes, I, I think if you want to discuss that further, we could probably request a closed session in advance of the meeting next week.
Okay, I'm just curious because of the amount. And then, lastly, the Sister City funds are not a, where are they coming from?
Well, actually, there's been a balance in that fund for many years, so partly it's the balance that has rolled forward into the current fiscal year and partly the committee has gone out and done some really good fundraising this year, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I have one. So, the advertising, what, what mode of advertising are we using? Is it just tell, is it radio, billboards, what are we doing?
I'm going to ask for help from community development on the specifics.
We have not made specific plans for the ad buy yet. The first step would be the creation of a logo and a slogan for the program. Please bear in mind, this is intended to be a 15-year program, so a upfront investment for the creation of a professional logo and design is a wise investment at this time. We are working with our marketing coordinator to put together a package of advertising that would probably include, I'm, I'm sort of guessing at this point because it will be based on what we can afford, but web, radio and print, I believe, at this time. And that isn't to say that beyond the initial advertising that's done at the time to really get the word out about the program, there will still be subsequent ad buys in the future in order to continue marketing the program.
And I was just wondering from the, you said there's going to be an outside entity or agency that does the, the market, the, developing the, the actual flyers, I guess, or something like that?
Actually, just the name, slogan, logo and the initial graphic design of the, of those materials. But, the remaining, we anticipate that the creation of actual flyers will be conducted in-house and because we have, in addition to the township, five other taxing partners that are participating, we expect that we will be able to make the logos, slogans and also talking points available to all our taxing partners so that they can promote this program to their constituents as well because they are, the enterprise zone is providing robust incentives because of the participation of our taxing partners.
And how do we find the entity that's going to actually do that?
We will go, and we've already initiated the process of requesting quotes from qualified graphic and marketing entities.
I just didn't know how much we, it had, the cost had to be in order to require an RFP or something like that. That's what I was basically getting at. Is there a set amount that you have to put it out for bid or something?
For professional services. I mean, we'll follow the city's procurement policy. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but.
Generally, anything over 1,000, we're going to have some kind of competitive process. It's with professional services, more often you're looking more at qualifications as a, as an important factor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Diane and Mike?
Approval ordinance number 2016-01-005, which is an ordinance revising fiscal year annual budget for marketing enterprise zone, workers' comp claim and miscellaneous items.
Second? Moved by Diane, second by Charlie. Mike Munson, did you have a comment?
Just to add to what Brandon was saying, we, out of that $14,000 budget, we've allocated about $6,500 for the, the firm that'll come up with the slogan and the logo, $3,500 for an ad buy in March, $2,000 for a Realtors bus tour and annual residential developers meeting and $2,000 for printing of brochures and handouts.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Ordinance number 2016-01-006, an ordinance to repeal Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Section 2-101, repeal of city ordinance requiring non-elected employees to retire at age 70 years. Legal?
Very simple. The ordinance currently is illegal, violates Illinois state law and federal law.
Move to send the council with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Moved by Charlie Smythe, second by Eric Jacobson. All, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Just note that the, you know, the older end of the council.
Right. I was going to leave that alone, but if you want to dig into that a little bit, you know?
This, this is called gray power.
Lord have mercy. All right, so moved by Charlie, second by Eric, the, the old end and all in favor?
Aye.
All of?
The young end.
On the young end of, okay, all right. So, it looks like everybody's voting yes on that. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion, the racial disparity of cannabis enforcement in Urbana. And I believe this discussion is going to be headed by Mr. Eric Jacobson.
Well, I don't know that I want to head the discussion, but I'll introduce the topic because I was the individual who took the initiative to suggest that we discuss it. And you've gotten in your packets a backrounder from Alex Batista, our Human Relations Director. The issue is, on the one hand, very simple, but I'm sure on the other, there are many complications to it. In Urbana, as in many places around the country, the arrests and citations for possession of marijuana are, well, depending on which year you look at, anywhere from six to nine times, which. well, depending on which year you look at, anywhere from six to nine times, which you would expect per capita based on the African-American population relative to the European-American population. And this pattern actually pertains across the country. The, and yet, all of the studies that have been done on marijuana usage, they vary a little bit from study to study and I, there are some numbers that are in your packet which are cited by the ACLU. I have personally looked at other studies that are a little bit different, but not a lot different. Roughly to a first approximation, marijuana usage appears to be, based on the best survey methods that social scientists can use, is approximately equal per capita between African-Americans and European-Americans. So the question, so there's clearly a disparate impact. And I don't think that there's, well, there's just clearly a disparate impact. I thought actually that Alex wasn't going to be here tonight, but I wondered if you wanted to come up and fill in some blanks on this. And actually Chief Connolly also, I've been positioned of an email that says that the chief would be happy to make some remarks and even show a couple of slides about this from the police point of view. And what I think would be really great would be if both Chief Connolly and Human Relations Director Batista came up together because I'm sure that the solution to this problem is going to involve both of you. If that's okay. I'm sorry Alex, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, you look a little hesitant.
If I might, I just thought that I would let the police chief do his presentation and then I would join if needed.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to provide some information to the city council, some statistical information concerning the cannabis involvement the police department has been involved with for 2015. I'm going to caveat this information with, understand that this is not an analysis of all of the cannabis-related events. This is merely taking a hundred and forty-nine police reports and with limited personnel and limited time, trying to make some explanation, provide you with some explanation as to what types of cases we have been involved with over 2015, just to help present a better picture. So the way we came up with the hundred and forty-nine cases was using the same information that Alex provided to you and to the traffic task force earlier this year or several years ago now. And the breakdown for the types of cannabis cases that were, are going to be provided with my information are outlined here. And basically that captures all of the cannabis-related cases for the city. It is important that the hundred and forty-nine cases isn't simply the police stopping someone walking down the street and found them to be in possession of cannabis. And I'll explain that to you in a little bit, but actually, we're going to find that in the long run, only a small percentage of those involve that type of police interaction. Of the hundred and forty-nine cases, seventy-two of them are as a result of police responding to complaints. And this provides you with a breakdown of those types of complaints. They were, the police are sent to a particular location to address a concern of a reporting party and as a result of that, those are the types of cases that were broke down. Seventy-seven of the hundred and forty-nine were officer-initiated contacts. Within those stops, this is somewhat the breakdown. Forty-two of them were traffic-related, that's thirty-seven general stops and then five DUIs. So when officer comes up for any particular violation, they learn that there's a warrant for a person's arrest or they find that they're driving while suspended or revoked, they detect the odor of cannabis, they arrest them for that offense and then also for the cannabis offense as well. In those cases, they may issue a city notice to appear or they may take them to the county jail based on a variety of factors. The twenty-six suspicious activity events could be cars parked in a parking lot at a, you know, at a bar or at an event. It could be cars parked in a park after the park is closed for the evening, that type of activity. The six that are categorized as drug activity or where officers actually observed drug transactions and the two officer-initiated were both stranded motorists where they walked up and detected the odor of cannabis as they approached the car. So what I tried to provide that now is kind of a breakdown of the type of cases that we were dealing with. And of the hundred and forty-nine, a hundred and thirty-two of them were adult arrests. They were for a variety of situations. As an example, fifty-two of them were in conjunction with another charge and I'll talk about those other charges in just a little bit and show you some examples. Eight were for possession with intent to deliver, that's cases involving packaging materials, scales, baggies, that types of stuff in addition to the quantity of the cannabis. State notices to appear or city ordinances varied.
I'm sorry, I just need some clarification so we can follow along. When you say arrests, that includes citations, like city citations, where people aren't handcuffed and taken to jail or?
It does. As a matter of fact, if you look on the fourth one down, city notices to appear are fifty-five and state notices.
Some of us just have this image of arrests as being hauled off to jail, so.
No, that's a custodial arrest, I apologize. There is a variety of different options available to the officer on the street. One is simply warn and release without taking, you know, just making contact with them. The city ordinance, the city citation, which is basically a, I don't want to say ticket because everybody associates a ticket with traffic, but a, it is a notice to appear on a city level, so it is a fine only that is quasi-criminal. The next is a notice to appear where you still are required to appear in state court, but you don't, you are not taken into custody and taken to the county jail and processed. And then a custodial arrest, which is where you are actually handcuffed and taken to the county jail. So the adult arrests, the hundred and thirty-two, I tried to identify all the types of arrests that the police engaged in during that calendar 2015. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
So the, again, there's a lot of discretion involved in the police, city ordinances in some cases, state notices to appear in others. And again, anecdotally, as I reviewed all of these police reports, sometimes, for instance, a city ordinance may have been issued, but the person attempted to try to destroy the evidence. So in lieu of that, the officer elevated the level of their involvement by issuing a state notice to appear instead of a city. Those kinds of things are the examples. Criminal history and intelligence does have some bearing on that as well. Examples for city notices to appear are officers are on foot patrol and they encounter somebody smoking marijuana in a hallway or in a laundry room or there have been recurring problems in apartment complexes where management has asked that the police provide additional presence there because of violent behavior and criminal damage and other things and they encounter people that are in possession of drugs by way of using it. Typically, those are handled on a city ordinance situation. So the adults are a hundred and thirty-two, the remainder are juveniles, which are seventeen and as you will see, a majority of the juveniles are addressed by way of the youth assessment center, which is, in my opinion, the totally appropriate way to address it. The one case involving taking to the juvenile detention center involved distribution and some more serious stuff. But overall, they're handled at that lower level. When we talked about, when I shared with you a little earlier about the fifty-two cases that involved other crimes, these are some of the crimes, the most, more egregious crimes that were associated with those cases. So just as an example, someone who's in possession of a firearm and in possession of cannabis or they had heroin or other opiates and cocaine and cannabis. So when the statistical information is provided, been provided about cannabis, those fifty-two cases that I addressed earlier involve these types of egregious behaviors that are associated with those previous arrests. And I don't want to minimize it, but the misdemeanor-type offenses that are also associated with them, again, reviewing the hundred and forty-nine cases typically involve shoplifting or trespassing. One was possession of a ballistic vest was a little concerning to us, but nonetheless, those other types of cases that we addressed involve this type of criminal behavior. So in closing, of the three thousand six hundred and fifty-seven traffic stops conducted in 2015, forty-two of them actually involve cannabis-related interactions, which is about one point one eight percent of the total stops. That breakdown identified on this slide also identifies the racial demographics as Mr. Jacobson has discussed. So I wanted to just provide the council with an overview of, again, this is anecdotal. Sergeant Adam Chacon did a phenomenal job. He's unfortunately on light duty because of a variety of duty-related injuries and he spent a great deal of time trying to research the hundred and forty-nine cannabis-related cases so that I could at least present somewhat of a picture to you. Now I brought, I asked Deputy Chief Sylvia Morgan to come with me tonight because I'm certain that this will generate some questions. I will certainly try to answer them or Sylvia can jot them down and then I can address those questions at a later time once we're able to research that information.
Yes, I am, I'm just, Diane.
I'm still not clear on the criteria for giving a city citation for cannabis possession versus the higher state violation. Is it amount?
Well, amount certainly has something to do with it, but on misdemeanor amounts, anything less than thirty grams of marijuana, then you start adding other contributing factors like past criminal history, like other crimes that were identified in addition to the possession, like circumstances involving, sometimes, for instance, on one of the notices to appear, a boyfriend was babysitting children and had two other people and was smoking marijuana in the presence of young children. Typically, mere smoking of marijuana would be handled at the lower level, which is a city ordinance, but because of those aggravating factors of children being present and the potential for child endangerment, the officer made the decision to increase the level of severity to make it more, to identify it as a more serious problem.
And then thirty gram, above thirty grams is.
A felony amount.
It bumps it up no matter what.
Correct.
So the discretion is under thirty grams, like an ounce, okay.
Correct. And again, this is not an analysis, we didn't analyze these hundred and forty-nine to delve into all of those. We looked at the police report, we tried to analyze it, or we tried to use those, that information as quickly as we can. No criminal histories were associated with them, no background, no police intelligence stuff. There just wasn't available to add them.
Eric. So this may be, this may be a little bit outside the frame of your report, but I want to put the question out for people to ponder. To what extent did adding cannabis citation or arrest enhance the public safety? How did that create an outcome where the public safety was better?
Adding it to what?
Well, you've talked about a lot of the cannabis citations and arrests being with people who were also arrested for other, other things.
I see.
So the question is, to what extent, in your judgment, or is this outside what, the scope of what you would think? To what extent in your judgment did adding cannabis possession to the other charges enhance the public safety?
Well, I guess I would answer it like this. When someone is in possession of a firearm and they are in possession of heroin and they are in possession of cannabis, all three of those are illegal according to the state of Illinois and when they're processed at the county jail, they, the officer simply identifies all the criminal violations that are associated with that case. And then if the state's attorney's office chooses to dismiss some of those or reduce some of those, that's a choice that they can make. But I would, I guess I'm just going to respond by saying that it's currently against the law, so the police identified it.
Okay, yeah, so, okay, so the question is illegality as opposed to the larger question of whether, at the end of the day, the public is safer because cannabis was charged.
Yeah, and we could get into a philosophical, I can tell you about two murder investigations I worked involving the small-scale sale of cannabis. So I mean, tonight is certainly not the night to discuss whether or not I personally feel that the possession or distribution of cannabis.
Well, right, and it's not really a question of personal feelings, it's not a question of personal feelings with me. I'll say one personal thing. I'm one of the very, very few people of my age and my general political persuasion who has never smoked marijuana. So the, because I thought that recreational drug use was too small an issue to commit civil disobedience. So I do respect the law. On the other hand, I'm very concerned about the impact of this law on people's lives and on whether it enhances the public safety more than it has a negative impact on the individuals who are cited or arrested.
And maybe a different person would be a better person to ask that. I mean, I've, I'm working a hundred and thirty shooting events in Champaign-Urbana. Many of those are associated to drug-related situations. So, you know, maybe I have a different lens and that certainly is a public safety issue.
That certainly is a public safety issue and I think, well, yeah, we'll talk, there'll be more discussion, I know.
Anyone else? Bill?
Yeah, I know about five years ago, I think, the UFI was able to start writing citations on Urbana's ordinance so that they could actually do the ticketing instead of doing an arrest. Do we have any figures on how many they actually write per year?
I don't, but I just looked at Deputy Chief Morgan and said, write that down and we'll find out for you. I don't have that answer.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So I'd like to give the chair to Eric for a moment, I have some questions myself.
Sure. And I will recognize, I will represent.
I will recognize Mr. Evans. Thank you. Okay, so thanks chief for pulling this together. In the spirit of what councilman or alderman Jacobson has brought forward, is to talk about the disparate impact that it's having on the African-American community. Do you have any response to that?
Well, it's clear by the numbers that there is a disproportionate number of African-Americans that have been arrested in 2015 compared to European or what, however you want to describe the white person.
I was just looking for parallel construction.
Okay.
So is there something that, from a policy standpoint, that the police department would be looking at to do different to address that?
Well, hopefully the I dot traffic study, who presented a number of recommendations, I am more than willing to continue to work with that committee and any other committee if we can try to develop a better trust among the community between the police and the community. No question about it.
Okay, I don't know if that's addressing the, I'm saying, but there's a actual, the numbers, especially with the population and all that type of, the data, that the African-American population being only sixteen percent, but also making up, you know, a significant number of these percentages. So when you look at this as the chief and you look at the impact that it's having on the African-American community, what ideas you have to address the disparate impact, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Sure. Well, I, you know, I guess looking at the data, and I'm not defending the position of the police by any stretch of the imagination, but when, if we were going to look just for. for instance, at the responding to complaints, quite frankly, those are, those are police that are being called by a neighbor who said, "I detect the odor of cannabis, and I want you to come and address that issue." Race, in my opinion, in those 72 events, for the most part, the police are unaware of who's even responsible for doing that. So, I understand that a large majority of the people involved in those types of behaviors were African-American, but I don't think that the police department could address a policy stance on addressing those reactive situations. With respect to officer-involved contacts, I think there are certainly, I'm, again, I wasn't prepared tonight to tell you the new police department policy on how we're going to try to address disproportionate numbers of African-Americans that are being arrested for cannabis cases. I wanted to just share with you at least the foundation, a baseline, for why the police, because logic would dictate, why are the police engaging in that type of activity? And I wanted to share with you why they were.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense, and I'm just, I'm thinking of two different things. As I looked at the traffic stop data, and I looked at, for instance, the number of African-American drivers who received tickets for their license plate light being out, or for the music being too loud, which is something like almost 80 or 90% of those tickets were given to African-Americans. And now I look deeper into this, and now I see that the marijuana tickets are heavily on the side of African-Americans. So I'm really looking at the relationship between the police and African-American community as a result of these particular findings. Also, the economic impact that it has on the African-American community, because we can't go buy, you know, food from Hickory River if we have to spend all the money on tickets and stuff like that. So when all of that is taken into consideration, is there an assessment by the department that says, for instance, if you stop an individual for whatever reason, and they're found to be in possession of a firearm, right, and they're not supposed to have one, and they have 27 grams of marijuana, it is the option for that officer at that particular point to arrest the individual for the weapons charge, right, but also still give a ticket for the marijuana, right?
Yes.
Is that the policy of the police department of Urbana to do it that way?
No, only because each, as I, as I tried, and again, very superficially, as I tried to describe for you, that there is no cookie-cutter approach to dealing with each event. I mean, there's so much information that you have to consider during each call for service, and you have to then weigh the totality of all that information and make your best determination based on all of that information. For us to, now, I did establish a policy several years ago that said, in situations where cannabis is found to be in possession, and it is less, it's a misdemeanor amount, and there are no extenuating circumstances, and I'm using a purely hypothetical at this point, the detective bureau needs the fingerprints of a particular person who is suspected of being responsible for a series of vicious armed robberies, purely hypothetical. And we have the opportunity to arrest that individual for a variety of misdemeanor offenses, marijuana being one of them, that may be very beneficial to a much larger picture that the police may be looking at. And in that case, my policy that says, if it's marijuana alone, and it's a misdemeanor amount, typically, we are going to issue a city ordinance violation. But then there's a caveat that says, however, that can always be overridden by a sergeant who makes the decision, or if anybody else has some additional information, or there are other circumstances, like we can't identify the person, the police officer received additional information about prior involvement, I mean, so there are so many factors that it would be almost impossible for us to be able to say, as a policy, you're just going to ignore a state statute, when sometimes it's very advantageous for the police to use that for unrelated stuff.
So I can see a situation, for instance, where, using a scenario that you described, where the only thing that you have to get this fingerprint, or to get something else to investigate this person further, then you use that opportunity of the 28, 27 grams of marijuana to actually retain that data, that information. But what I'm describing is a, when you have two things that you could use, you have a firearm, or you have a, I don't know, some other illegal activity that allows you to still get that information, why then would we use the ordinance that we have, which allows for a ticket for 30 grams or less? Why would we, as you say, escalate that, or move that to a higher level of a charge, given the understanding of the disparate impact that it has on a particular group of people, which we might consider a protected class of people?
Sure. Again, I guess I'm not prepared to address analytically all of these cases. I will share this information. There's a home invasion, armed robbery, the police are pursuing the suspects, the, along the path of flight, two firearms are located, two firearms are located, fitting the description of that home invasion. The person is found to be in possession of cannabis, he's arrested for, for home invasion, UUW, possession of cannabis, and now it's prior to trial, they don't bring the gun in because there wasn't a direct, no fingerprints were found on, you know, at the state police crime lab. So there's not a direct correlation, even though it's on the path of flight, even though it was a similar description, it's, they chose not to use the gun as a basis for this multiple convicted felon who was responsible for a home invasion. However, he did, we, we had the marijuana in his pocket, in his possession, and as a result of that, that felony amount of marijuana was what, fortunately for us, was able to get him off the street, so that another home invasion didn't occur. So it's very difficult for me to sit tonight and say, across the board, we're just going to ignore what is currently a state statute, that now the state's attorney may choose to, to not prosecute that situation, but I would be very reluctant to just say, effective, the 25th of January, we're going to ignore state statute.
Well, I guess we can kind of banter back and forth in these different scenarios. I'll let this one go, but I still, I'm very troubled by the department giving the understanding of the disparate impact that it's having financially on the African-American community, as well as the relationship, would use an ordinance that the city council has passed to be issued as a ticket, to be used to exasperate or to elevate a situation, a criminal, to a criminal case, or to a more serious case, especially given the knowledge that we have now, after the traffic stop data has come through, and we can see very clearly what's happened. So I guess we could go back and forth on that.
Sure.
But that's something that I would be anxious to see changed, or have some sort of clear-cut policy on how that would be handled in the future, when you already have an issue that you can use to gather intel, or to get somebody off the streets, and there's not, and it's not necessary to actually charge the person with a more serious crime or the marijuana charge. So that was just one of my concerns. And then the, when would you warn somebody and release them? What would?
A great example is a police canine hit on a vehicle. The dog indicates the presence of cannabis or controlled substances, they search the car based on that probable cause, and they, it's commonly referred to as shake, or marijuana residue that's scattered throughout the carpeting. Certainly, there's physical evidence to support the person being in possession of cannabis, but the reality is, there's, you know, you have to balance that with the number of calls for service, the number of 911 responses that evening, the number of personnel that are on the street, and you have to determine, I mean, literally, you could be arresting people every minute of every day, so the officer has the discretion at that point to say, "This evening, I'm going to warn, I'm not going to collect all that physical evidence, I'm going to warn you on that information and release you."
So, want to look at this through a different lens. Let's suppose that Urbana is like the rest of the nation, and cannabis possession is approximately at equal rates among blacks and whites. So if we look at 2015, 68 arrests and citations, black arrests, citations for cannabis, whites would be, based on the proportion in the population, would be about 250, and instead, there's 55. Do you think those 200 white users of cannabis who didn't get arrested are posing any public safety hazard? Yeah, that's, that's, that's the question, or, like Eddie?
Yeah.
Yes, that's a serious question. That is a serious question, Mike. But, okay, if nobody wants to answer it, we'll let it sit.
So, the, you had a drug activity stat that said that there were two blacks and four whites who were arrested for a drug act? I didn't see that, I don't know where it is exactly in the slide.
Well, under, on page four, there's drug activity complaints, there were 19, that's where the police responded to those complaints. Someone called 911 and said, "I need the police here for this particular complaint."
Right. The one I'm looking at, it says drug activity, and the arrests were two blacks and four whites, and you said this is where actual deals were being observed, something like that?
Yes, I apologize, that's, I, that's under officer-initiated, so the officer actually sees a transaction take place.
Okay. So we have more proportionate numbers, almost, when it, when it comes to actual dealers of marijuana, where you see two blacks and four whites who are arrested. So I think you understand that what I'm getting at, is that when it, when we look at the number of people who are actually being fined for marijuana, or being arrested for marijuana, then it's heavily towards African-Americans. But the people who are actually dealing, what you see is that, you see that there are more whites being arrested for, for dealing, or being actually caught, or seen by the police dealing. So, I mean, I think that all of us can understand the complexities of that, or seeing that this is certainly not balanced. The numbers should clearly show, given the number of whites in the population, and the number of, that basically everybody's using the same, that these numbers should be more balanced.
Sure.
So, I just think that there's got to be some sort of approach to this, that we come up with, whether we're sitting down together doing it?
Right.
Or this, the traffic stop committee, to say that we're going to approach this in a different manner, to do something to balance these out. So, I mean, I'm not going to belabor the point very much further, but I do have some concerns, and I'm sure we'll talk about it more some other time.
And I firmly believe that if we, if we, if we had a statistician that would be able to really dive into this information, it would be beneficial for the entire community. Unfortunately, that's expensive, and that's something I'm going to come to you with, in the budget portion, to say, this is something that, for intelligence-led policing for the future, I would love to discuss that further, and I think that's one of the recommendations of the IDOT Traffic Committee as well.
You know, my last question was in relationship to, because you speak often about the shootings and various different things like that, and you refer to it in your presentation as the more egregious criminal behavior and stuff like that, that are associated with marijuana possession, or something like that. And when you talk about crack and heroin and stuff like that, many people in the community have a, have very warped perceptions, or conditioned perceptions about amounts and things like that. So if you, if you say, as the chief of police, you say more egregious things, then, and you list heroin and crack, then I think it comes across to the public as if you found, you know, kilos of cocaine, and kilos of heroin, and this person had some marijuana. What do you, what would you say was the average amount of heroin or crack that was involved in those other arrests where the marijuana was involved?
I don't want to speculate, so I won't be able to answer that. I'll certainly try to find that out, but just for clarification, for the more egregious, what I was trying to identify was, when I shared with you earlier, that these 149 cases are not simply people walking down the street, we stop them, and we find marijuana in their pocket. We find them in possession of a firearm, we find them in possession of crack cocaine, or in possession of heroin and cannabis, and it was related to that case. So, just, you know, a domestic, a violent domestic, where someone physically battered his or her spouse, and cannabis was in possession. That's where the most egregious cases were identified for 2015, just for clarification. But as far as quantities, it certainly is not kilos, I assure you of that. I wish we could identify kilos, we would resolve a lot of problems, but it is clearly smaller amounts than that, I just don't have those numbers.
So when we're talking about, one thing that you said about past criminal history aggravates the city ordinance also. So if a person who has a felony conviction is caught with 15 grams, that's automatic?
No, not at all. If, you know, he had a felony conviction for burglary, it certainly wouldn't warrant. If, however, he had five prior drug distribution convictions, it certainly would then impact the decision made by the police officer at the time.
But why? If it's, if it's 15 grams, and it's less than the amount?
Well, because 10 or more is possession with intent to deliver under certain circumstances. So it all, again, I won't be able to give you a-
But that's the education I think that, you know, that the public needs, because, I mean, if we say 30 grams or less is a finable offense, you can give a person a fine, a ticket for that, that's not clarifying that, does that mean that individually packaged, or is it just in one lump sum?
Right.
Now you're saying that if it's 10 grams or more, it could be?
No, I'm not saying that, the state law is saying that. And I didn't know I was presenting, Jim can probably share, I mean, an entire evening on the Illinois state statutes. What I'm telling you is, in the cannabis arena, 30 grams of mere, of mere possession of cannabis, less than 30 is a misdemeanor amount, more than that is felony. 10 or more with the intent to distribute, so if it's repackaged for sale, if we have scales, if we have packaging materials, and $7,000 in cash in his pocket, and all we have left is 11 grams of marijuana individually packaged, then that's a felony amount as well. So there are a lot of variables that I wasn't prepared to address tonight.
I just want to state that I do not believe, and I think your presentation is reinforced, I do not believe there is an intention of disparate treatment on the part of police officers. I absolutely don't believe that. The only question in my mind is, I, what I believe is that we're all functioning under a system, under a set of constraints that results in a disparate impact. And so, in my mind, the question is, what do we do about those constraints to remove the disparity, or mitigate the disparity in the impact? So I just want to be real clear, because I know, I've asked questions that have ranged from, I don't know, philosophical, or penetrating, or in the case of Mr. Madigan, infuriating, but I, but, but, but I really do not believe that there is an intent for dispariteness. I believe it's a disparate impact that we, that we have to figure out how to, how to get around.
I do not believe that there's an intentional, an intent on behalf of the police department in Urbana to, to go find African-Americans and say, "Hey, let's make sure that we charge African-Americans more." It's not my position either, but what I am saying is that the result is the same. And so, for me, when I ask you as the chief, what would be the, how would we address this, and basically, you're saying you don't know how, that's problematic for me.
Well, if that's the impression that I gave you, that I don't know how, I apologize for that. I'm not prepared to address it with you, Aaron, tonight, so that, without any thought to this process, we arbitrarily establish a policy that is not enforceable, and may not be in the best interest of the public safety of the people that we serve. That's my answer.
That's my point, though, Pat, is that you haven't thought about it. That is the point.
I think about it every day.
I'm trying to make-
I think about it at the Community Coalition meeting, I think about it at the Martin Luther King celebrations that I attended all weekend, I think about it all the time.
Okay. So then there'll be something done about it soon?
Something is being done about it.
Okay.
And there's a lot more to do.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, let's, let's figure out, this was the, this is supposed to be the beginning of this discussion, and we've got a lot of work to figure this out. Like, as Eric's pointed out, we've got the ACLU stuff, it's-
pointed out, we've got the ACLU stuff. It's an ongoing national issue. And it's part of the disparate impact that we're seeing in a number of arenas. And we need to figure out a way to mitigate that disparate impact, which I think both of you have hit on in your ways. And so, going, we need to figure out a path going forward. Some of the ideas, and I think we'll have Alex up here next to talk about it too, is, what are the steps? How do we engage the community? How do we engage the Police Department? How do we engage professionals? The Neighborhood Coalition is another aspect of this. You know, it's going to take us a while to figure this out. And again, it's part of the traffic, part of and comes out of some of the issues raised in the traffic studies. So, the two pieces are probably going to go hand in hand as we go forward, because that too is a national issue. And so, it's a tough one. And we'll just have to go carefully forward and keep talking. But, at least, it's on the table now, and it's on the table nationally. And so, there are a lot of people working on this, and we should look to others, look to other communities, and that sort of thing, to figure out where we're going. So, I appreciate the chief's point at this point, the chief's willingness to take this up. And like I said, I don't think we can solve it tonight. So, I'd like to hear from Alex and start charting a path forward.
Were there any other questions for chief? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
As you saw on the first page of the memo that I prepared for you, I learned that you wanted to have a conversation about cannabis enforcement. And I was asked if I would put together some of the data, that is, within our information system, that might help you in beginning that conversation. And that's what you have in front of you. When I started out the report, the memo, by pointing out the ACLU quote that basically says that marijuana use is roughly equal among blacks and whites. And I put that in there because it sort of begins to frame the conversation. And then, I went ahead and gave you some tables. Now, there's a report that I believe I emailed you all, that the ACLU had prepared. It's about 171 pages, and it goes through and tells you about all of the states, and it tells you about the tables on disparate impact. And I thought, I wonder what our data looks like. So, I went ahead and followed their format, and pulled our data, and put it into that format. So, now you have an appendix that's just for Urbana, that walks you through how we're doing. And for the most part, what we're seeing nationally is also here, in our community. As I listen to the police chief, you know, we have a disparate impact. And this is something that we all have to address, the city council, the Police Department, the community. And I compliment you on looking at, what is it that the city council can do? There are some areas I'm sure that you can be impactful, and some that is out of your reach. Today, I have not been asked to study this problem. On Thursday, I quickly pulled all this data together for you, so you would have it for today. There has been no task force to review cannabis enforcement, or to partner with the Police Department on it. So, I'm not prepared today to give you solutions. I'm only prepared to give you the data. As I started to look at the data, I was curious by, I came up with some other questions, and I'd like, down in the next couple of weeks, provide you additional information. For example, one of the things I noticed as I was looking at the data, the majority of the individuals that are being charged with cannabis possession in 2015, 13% of that population was under 17. 35%, this is African-Americans, 13% of African-Americans under 17 were charged. 35% of those charged African-Americans were between 18 and 21. That's a very critical age. It sets up impact on the rest of their lives. And then, 33% of African-Americans charged were between the ages of 22 and 29. So, the individuals coming into this system are young adults, and depending on whether 22 and 29 is young anymore. When you look at, you don't have this data, I'm just sort of citing it for you. I came up with this data earlier this morning. When you look at white arrests, Caucasian arrests, 12% are under 17 years of age. That's not far from the 13% for African-Americans. 29% of Caucasians were between 18 and 21. That's not far from the 35% for African-Americans. 34% of Caucasians charged were between 22 and 29 years of age. And that's not too far off from the African-American percent of 33.8. So, I looked, as I looked at it, a lot of it is younger individuals. I also looked, and you don't have this table in front of you, I was wondering, where are these people coming from? And so, one of the things that the information system tracks is where they're coming from. And as I looked, I noticed that in 2015, the African-Americans charged with marijuana possession, 47% had residency in Urbana. 26% were in Champaign. And then, every, the next highest city was blank or unknown, 10%. And then, they start going down. Rantoul, 2.9, and then down to either 0 or 1%. For Caucasian individuals in 2015, 40% of them were from Urbana. 9% were from Champaign. And then, 14% were unknown, or blank. And then, they start going down. So, I just wanted to let you know that at some point, if you wish to have a study, you know, a task force might be appropriate. If you'd like me to look into something, I can. I don't believe that this is the Police Department's, the disparate impact that we're experiencing has many facets. And I think that every agency has to look at that. I am the human rights officer, not director. I do administer and direct the functions of the office. I am a division head. However, when I look at the operations of the office, I care about all disparate impacts. I care about disparate impact in contracting. I care about disparate impact in hiring. I care about disparate impact in enforcement, in terms of outcomes. And so, I look at that entire range of issues, and this is one of the issues that I'm looking at. What I can leave you in terms of good news is, if you look at the packet that I transmitted to you, in 2010, there was a time where in Champaign County, you were nine times more likely to be arrested if you are charged with cannabis possession, if you were African-American. And if you look at Table A6, you'll see that there was a time when we were very close to that, here in Urbana. We were, an African-American was nine times more likely to be charged in 2012. In 2010, it was only five. Then, it crept up to six and 11, up to nine in 2012. And then, it started coming down, down to six in 2013, went up a little bit again in 2014 to seven, and now, at 2015, we're at five again, which is what it was in 2010. And that's a significant difference from the state nine times. So, there is progress. And again, I want to echo some of the sentiments that have been shared. I've said on the record many times, I admire the police chief. I admire our Police Department. This is a difficult time. This is a difficult issue, and it is important that we inquire, and that we find what it is, what is it that every agency or element of society can do to improve it. And that's pretty much where I leave it. Are there any questions for me?
Anybody? Chuck?
Well, Alex, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, like I said, and you've touched on it too, is inter-agency type approach to this. Do we look at, using the Human Relations Commission as a sounding board? Do we, or do we, you know, put together a community-type task force? Do we work with one of our other groups? How do we get the groups, how do we get people around the table talking about this, and looking at some solutions, both locally and from the national picture?
I'd have to think about it. There's pros and cons to another task force. There's pros and cons to a committee that can, the Community Coalition might be of help, perhaps an internal committee here in the city. I'm not, I could, I'd have to think about that. I think-
And obviously, we don't have the mayor here tonight, but clearly, she'd be part of the, part of the process of directing where this would go.
Could I add just one comment? Something that the police chief said really spoke to me. There's a lot of statistics, and it's important that we be able to look at those statistics, interpret those statistics, and engage in data-driven decision-making. And I forget what the police chief called it, in terms of 25th century policing, or police intelligence. I cannot agree with him more. And if we had a scorecard, or vital signs, or some way that the Police Department can track how it's doing, I take a medical model approach to just about everything. And it's important when we have strategies, interventions to track, how is that medication or intervention working? It's important, we have, in finance, we track our money down to the penny. We have quarterly reports. We have, and you can do that with law enforcement. So, the statistician may be very helpful. I'm beginning the process of collecting and analyzing the statistics, and will communicate with the Police Department as appropriate, and conduct whatever research you ask me to as appropriate. So, data-driven decision-making is helpful.
I don't know who was next.
You should ask Bill, because I-
Go for it, Bill. All right. Yeah, I wanted to go back to something you said about all the disparities. I think that's important to try to keep this in perspective with the other things that you're looking at, especially in relationship to employment. Last I remember, like, the unemployment rate for African-Americans versus whites, county-wide, is about double. Does that sound about right? Do you know offhand?
No, I don't.
So, maybe 5% versus 10%. It seems that maybe in setting our priorities, we need to, I mean, I think we all feel that this is something that we have more control over, because we are responsible for the police. But, when you compare, you know, 120, 140 total, of all races, arrests in a year, and how much can you reduce that out of, especially when you consider, part of the statistics we received was 12 to 14% of people use marijuana in the past year. That's probably, so that's 5,000 to 6,000 people in Urbana, and you probably can guess they didn't use it just once in the past year. They probably used it multiple times. So, there's probably 50,000 or 60,000 cases at a minimum of violations of this law, and we're arresting kind of on an arbitrary nature, 120, 140. And it has some impact, but how much can we actually reduce that versus if we put our efforts, or in addition to, if we put our efforts toward reducing the unemployment by better enforcement, or whatever it takes, you know, looking at that problem as well, either better enforcement of our human rights policies, better training, or, you know, whatever the problem is there, a 1% reduction in unemployment would employ probably an extra 30 to 40 people, and that has $40,000, $50,000 per year, per person. So, you're talking about a lot of money. I don't know, it's several million dollars, like, $2 or $3 million per year to reduce unemployment by 1%. And we're talking about maybe, if we eliminated all the fines, the $300 fine for 100 tickets, you know, you're talking about a few thousand dollars. So, I think it's important to kind of keep it all in perspective, and maybe you can help us with that, as you go through all the things you're dealing with, and all the disparities, to try to kind of prioritize things. And, I mean, it's all important, and, you know, we probably don't have as much control over unemployment, but I think it helps to kind of try to keep things in perspective. Diane?
What kind of following in Bill's footsteps, I'm just, I would like to go back to the Traffic Stop Task Force, and remind all of us that we still have to deal with those results, and look at those disparities, and look at getting at the root causes of those disparities. And I think that is our, should be our primary focus at this point. And we haven't even started to talk about the recommendations of the task force. And I hope that we schedule regular sessions to do that very thing. And, yes, cannabis has an impact, but I think our focus should be back on the task force report that we were given, and we have a responsibility to address the issues that were raised by that report. And that's where I would like our energy to be at this point. And then, this is, this is, this is part of it, but it's not, it's not the main focus. And we need to get back to our, to our main focus here.
Eric?
So, let me pick up on what Diane has said. I guess I viewed this as being part of our response, because this was raised in the task force report, although it wasn't, you know, entirely about traffic stops. But, so, let me, let me ask you, Alex, let's suppose that this is Chapter 1 of the, or Item 1, or something like that, of response to the Traffic Stop Task Force report. And this is going to be one of multiple ones. Do you have a sense as to the, an appropriate process, or could you advise us to an appropriate process to work through that agenda? The, you know, you're sort of key, in the sense that this really is a human relations issue. It's, the question of either discrimination or disparate impacts is right key to that. Could we have a discussion as to process for working through this, and all the other items that are in the task force report?
I could study some suggestions for moving forward. I agree with you that the human relations officer has a critical role to play in the process. I believe that the officer can partner with the Police Department, and the City Council, in a problem-solving process. And the problem-solving process involves defining the problem, researching root causes, developing interventions, and monitoring the progress, the result of what those interventions are achieving, whether it's positive, or negative, or sideways. So, I could go back and think about it. I'd have to also talk to the mayor, and see what kinds of solutions might be helpful to you. I know that I'm going to be developing a strategy in terms of how the human relations officer helps the community reduce disparities in multiple areas. And it's, it's a process that you engage in, and you're persistent in, and you're not going to solve world hunger in three months or a year. These are societal problems. But, one thing I love about the city of Urbana is, we want to improve. We always want to improve. And we want to lead. And so, I'm excited that I'm in the right city for that. Not that other cities don't do that, but this one is particularly good at that. So, I will be reporting to you at some point in time in the near future, what my goals are, my plans, and then eventually giving you a scorecard. Just, here's where I am. Here's where we're going. Just here's where we, here's where I am, here's where we're going. And at some point, I'm going to correct course or reverse course if something's not working. That's what I'm going to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely echo Diane. We can't let the, that task force report die or wither away. We've got to deal explicitly with each and every one of the recommendations one way or another. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I guess what I suggest is we just keep this on the agenda every two weeks. Take a little piece of it and make some, and try to make some progress. And you've got some, some additional statistics to bring us in a couple of weeks. And maybe you can have some, talk to the mayor, and, and we can have a, a more, more discussion on, on maybe developing a process to go forward.
And, and I'd like to work with the police department, you know, give them the opportunity to look at the data and to comment. Some of the information that the police chief presented today is very helpful.
You know, the other thing-
Okay, wait a minute, Eric. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think Bill has something.
Okay. I wanted to throw out other, one other thing for consideration. I know our ordinance has a $300 fine currently, but that potentially could have been higher than the state fine if, if the state bill had passed this past summer because they had proposed a $125 fine for 15 grams and less. And I think the governor amended that to $200, but they changed some other things about the metabolites, and they ended up not reconsidering that. But it looked like at the most, it would have been $200. So I think at a minimum, we should, in order to reduce the disparate impact, consider reducing that fine as long as it doesn't encourage officers to escalate the charge. You know, that's a consideration too, I guess, but that's just something I wanted to throw out.
Do you have something else, Eric?
Yeah, I'll just finish with maybe an interesting fact about cannabis that I didn't know until this morning. I was having a conversation with Naomi, and she said, you know, I've never heard of anybody dying from a marijuana overdose. I said, I hadn't either, but I don't know. So I immediately Googled. So this is from the National Cancer Institute. You can't kill yourself with marijuana as you can with opioids or with alcohol because cannabis does not, the, the active ingredients in cannabis don't target any receptors in the respiratory system. So you may get really sick, but you'll keep breathing. So I just thought that was interesting, and I just learned it.
Unless you do something dumb. You drive your car to a-
Sean, I'd like to give you the chair for a second, Eric. I have some questions myself.
Yes, please.
So when we talk about, just sort of segueing into my comments using Eric's last comment, something I noted as the chief talked about, the past, for instance, marijuana being involved in a situation where a young child was being looked after, right? And I think driving under the influence or doing anything under the influence certainly impairs your ability to, to do that thing in an efficient way, on the most efficient way possible. From a societal standpoint, and this is why I think that we have to consider some of these things, even our own policies. So if a person is smoking a joint or a bowl, or whatever it is that they're smoking while they're watching a child, then all of a sudden, that's an aggravated offense. But you can be drinking a fifth of Hennessy, or you can be smoking cigarettes in an enclosed vehicle with a child in it, and that's fine. The society accepts that, right? So I understand how we may be locked into enforcing policies that, that the society has embraced thus far. But when we have autonomy, when we have the ability to make a decision in relationship to a warning or a ticket as opposed to escalating something, that's where I'm, I'm wondering where we can have an impact from a policy standpoint because we don't have to wait for it to get to the state's attorney or someone like that. We can actually address it at a, at onsite with the police officer or through some sort of ordinance or something like that. So I'm, I'm hoping that we will think about those things as well. And, you know, we talked about unemployment, which I understand, but I don't see how it fits into this particular conversation other than these felonies that get handed out with these drug arrests do impact the ability to be employed. So I think that's another very important piece. And you looked at the age brackets and stuff of people who are being assigned these tickets or being arrested and possibly going to the system and getting charged with a felony conviction. So, I mean, there are various different things that we can look at that I think might be addressed at a policy level. And just speaking to strictly the traffic stops, Diane, you were talking about just the traffic stops themselves. 42 were cannabis-related, right? But even though the ACLU and all the other studies show that the people use marijuana at the same rate, and although we are, whites outnumber African Americans or blacks 6 to 1, it's still 27 black folks get tickets cannabis-related and in a cannabis, in a stop, for a cannabis-related offense, only 15 whites. No Asian, no Hispanic, or no Latino, right? So there's still disparate impact even in that situation, right? And so that results in, if there's a $300 ticket, $8,100 in the black community is taken out before a cannabis fine. And at least 300 of that would have went to Hickory River. So this is not a, because that's just the cannabis on a traffic stop. That's not the suspicious stop. That's not the, I walked up on you and caught you someplace or whatever. Because that's going to be some more, that's not even adding all that. And then you put on the license plate, and you put on the, the fines for the, the loud music. That stuff, that becomes a compounding issue, right? And so they have to be looked at not just as isolated situations, but it's a complete impact on the black community and on the, especially as it relates economically and the disparate impact that it has on the black community. And so my desire is that we look at that, and it's not a frustrating situation, but it's just simply, hey, look, this is a concern, and we need to address it. And I think we have to address it at the city council level as well as at the, at the police department. So those are my comments at this particular point. I hope that we can actually change this. I do think that there is a, an aspect of this which has always been troubling and always been a point of contention, contention with myself and the chief, is that these stops have a particular aim, aim and objective. The aim and the objective, and it has been this way for years, is to find contraband, is to find drugs on individuals. That is part of the purpose of the stops. And so when we see these, this impact, here it is right in front of us, and the, the economic impact that it has on our community is far greater than it has on anybody else. So those are just my comments. It's not particularly a question or anything for you. I just thought I'd use my bully pulpit to say whatever I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, you may have the chair of that.
Thank you, appreciate it. So hearing nothing from Mr. Madigan about this issue, I guess there's no further business, and this meeting is adjourned.